And building committee to order, let the minute taker please call the roll.
Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Declare for, uh, next approval, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 8th, 2021. Do I have a moment?
So move.
Second.
Second. Any questions, corrections, changes? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes. Next, report and recommendation, redevelopment agreement, RDA for 372 North Wooddale Road. Proposed multiple redevelopment, former SBT, Mr. Cage.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just give a kind of a brief recap, because I know we have some new faces. Uh, this is one of our favorite properties, next door, 372 North Wooddale Road. Just for historical context, um, I believe we had a couple of Zoom meetings on this in the past, um, with some elevations and some kind of preliminary plans, uh, for what would be proposed, a four-story building, obviously next door to the south of us, approximately 230-unit apartment, uh, building, um, with parking, four-story parking facility next door, and, um, some additional at-grade parking. Very preliminary stages. I know, and I, forgive me, I, I believe one of the meetings was maybe back in January, but all those Zoom meetings seemed to blend into one big, fun, happy Zoom meeting. And we have, um, we have the developer here, obviously, we have, uh, City Attorney Bond. To kind of put it in some context, the RDA, the redevelopment agreement, which is what you have in front of you, which is the draft, kind of outlining, um, kind of the, the rules of the game, what we're discussing, because importantly, the, uh, subject property is in a, uh, is in our TIF district, uh, number two TIF district. And the RDA is kind of one of the starting points to outline kind of the rules of the game. Please bear in mind that, you know, a lot of these plans have to be drawn up by an architect, an engineer. They will be reviewed by staff. It still has to come back to CDC, go through the approval stages, and you guys will see all of that. So, um, this really is kind of like the next step after that introduction to, uh, potential exciting new development. Um, with that, I'll stop talking, and if there are any questions, Mr. Bond is here to handle the, the legal aspects, and, um, I'll see what I can do with anything else.
Excellent deflection right from the start. Uh, are there any questions? Wow. Oh, Mayor, please.
And Mr. Cage, I was looking at the timeline on some of these things, and you say they don't want to break ground until next June? Is that, did I look at that right?
Mr. Cage?
Uh, yes, so, um, one of the exhibits in the agreement, uh, that the developer submitted, um, kind of breaks down a timeline, uh, which ends up with groundbreaking, kind of June, uh, between June and July of next year. Really, from, from my perspective, kind of going back to the, the plans that will be reviewed by staff, CDC, uh, committee and council, will come through the PUD process, the planned unit development process, and that will be over the winter. Uh, but you're correct, uh, sorry. Um, groundbreaking is estimated to be, uh, mid-June, uh, to July.
So, going through CDC, basically tonight, you're just looking for an approval recommendation to move forward with the project, right? And then the plans will be coming forward, got to go to CDC, they got to do their drawings and everything.
Um, I, I'll hand over to, uh, Attorney Bond in just a second, but I think the, the RDA kind of sets out the parameters, the TIF request, um, some of the rules of the game, uh, for want of a better description. So it's kind of part one of a, uh, multi-part process. All the, all the plans, whether it's, um, stormwater, architectural, um, layout plans, all those things will be submitted by the, by the applicant. Will come to staff, staff will review, they'll go to the, um, CDC at a public hearing, come to committee and city council for review and approval.
Fellow?
Sure, go ahead.
So, we're going to CDC, I mean, we started back in January. I would imagine something's happening already other than the attorneys talking, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Cage, was that a, was that a question?
Uh, not quite, not quite finished, but... So when we go to CDC, that should be coming up soon, I would take it, they have something to move forward, correct?
Um, CDC, we have this fall, yes.
Once you pass CDC, if, if you've got a good drawing and you're within the city codes, should flow pretty good. So, my question is really, are they going to start demolishing the building, or are they waiting until June for that also? That, when we say break ground, that's everything, right?
Mr. Cage?
Um, yeah, typically, uh, my experience is, um, breaking ground is, um, breaking ground for the new project. Obviously, you have to have the demolition of the existing structure there. Uh, what we don't want to do is, if we demolish the structure and the parking today, then we're going to run into a stormwater issue, because it will be treated as, you know, um, open space. So it's my expectation that demolition will happen, um, obviously, when the, um, contractors are mobilized on site, uh, so next summer. Uh, I think the RDA, you know, uh, Mr. Bond can, um, cover this probably in better detail, really sets out the request, um, what the applicant is looking for in terms of some TIF assistance, and some of the parameters, and I think when we've done RDAs in the past, um, it gives that level of, you know, I mean, this is a big project, it's a big project for, for Wooddale, it's a big project for the developer. Um, I know you've seen, um, their other project, uh, one of their other projects up in Wheeling. Um, I think, just very quick sidebar, from my standpoint, what I like about that project in particular is that it's not just a residential component. That's, you know, that's the component we're talking about today, but obviously, it brings in other things in that situation, restaurants around it, et cetera. Um, so it's more of a transit-orienteded development, and I think, in terms of planning and, you know, what I see, and what I think I see, uh, kind of in this area, one key component is bringing more people and having a more dynamic, walkable downtown core, whatever you want to call it, which is really building off, going back to the Vision Plan, which I think was 2011, 2012. Um, so, sorry, I rambled a little bit there.
Sorry.
Mayor, follow? No, go ahead.
Yeah, so you just brought up the TIF, right? And I know we got these exhibits and every... Are we going to be showing some of that stuff this evening, or we're just looking for quick approval on? Because I know I'm going to start getting questions from people, especially when they hear the number, right? It's all there in black and white. So, I have, I know what the answer is, but I like transparency.
Mr. Cage?
Uh, I completely agree. What we don't want to do is present something that's going to change. Um, I think the RDA sets out, these are the parameters, ballpark of what we, as a group, want to do. When, you know, what I don't want to do is put up an elevation of a building, and then six months later have to put up a new one, and it's changed significantly and have to explain it. All these plans, whether it's landscaping, whether it's engineering, stormwater, which, kind of going back to my prior... Stormwater is a huge component in this area, obviously, with the creek not that far away. Um, I, I would say on this site, stormwater is, you know, meeting the code, um, is very important. So, all these things will be presented, will come out. This is really, in my opinion, the, the concept was discussed and presented at the Zoom meeting a number of months ago. This is kind of the next step, which, if, um, we all agree to it, obviously, there's got to be some, um, uh, further legal review. There's got to be, the exhibits have to be attached, document has to be signed by both parties and recorded. But it really sets the table for the type of development that we're looking for. All the documents, um, and all the plans will be presented, and will come through that PUD process, which will be public hearing at CDC, will present much the same documentation to the committee, get the council's feedback, and then council review and potential approval.
Alderman Sizmarski, you have a question?
Is there anyone here representing this project tonight? No?
Yes, the...
Mr. Cage?
Yes, the, the applicant, uh, Mr. Brad Friedman from Linmark Group is here.
Well, since there's no questions, we couldn't, we couldn't go home without a question. Nobody's more pro-development up here than I am. But you're asking us to approve this agreement that, I didn't count every blank space in this thing, but, uh, 40? Uh, and on a list of exhibits, of which I've seen one of the 17, maybe two. And one of them, you're telling me may change, so my concern is, what are we approving? Yes, we want to do the development, yes, we want to do the building, uh, but in question, you know, uh, for me, I'd like to see things tightened up a little bit, including the timeframe. Uh, we referenced the building, so the building's going to be like, or similar, or kin to one they've already built. My assumption would be they already have that set of prints, that has to be adjusted for the new site size. Uh, so, I'm not sure why some of these things couldn't be sped up. I think more pieces are known about this project than are detailed or alluded to in, in the agreement. And again, I want to move forward, I would just wish this had a little more, uh, meat and potatoes attached to it, to give me a better level of comfort saying, yes, let's go ahead. That being said, I do, we do want to build and go ahead. Is, what, what's the potential for getting a little more by the next meeting, by the council meeting, to add to this? I mean, I, I get that you don't want to present to the general public, but where I was going to make the statement, can we attach the documents from January 21st meeting to this and call that whatever exhibit that would have been, the 16, 17, 15, we can look it up later. You know, for a little peace of mind, knowing that it would change a little bit, as opposed to having just the verbiage in there that we're going to build a four-story building comprised of 230 units, an X amount of parking spaces, that's, that's pretty broad. I know that was long-winded.
All good points. Um, we do run, I mean, I guess that the, kind of the, the answer is, can we include what we previously looked at? Absolutely. Will those documents need to be modified and changed slightly as we go through the process? Yes. Um, you know, it's, it's not our goal to hide anything. When we were at the last committee meeting, we wanted to move this forward, um, and I'll be perfectly honest, the, we, we didn't really have too much time for the council to review it, uh, which is why I turned it around in relatively quick time. Um, we can flush the document out for the council meeting. Uh, the only question is, is that next week's council meeting, or is that the one after? Because I think, just in terms of the amount of work that the attorney needs to do just to tighten it up, get all the exhibits...
We got a good attorney, he's good.
I think a, a week, which I know that's got to be in the packet pretty much tomorrow, um, so it would have to be the next council meeting, but could we do that? Absolutely.
Mr. Bond, do you want to?
Yeah, and just if I could, so everybody, so the, the redevelopment agreement, Alderman Woods is correct, there are a number of items that, some of which, you know, that, we've got the concept that was presented to most of you, and now this is the next step in the, in the, the phasing, is the redevelopment agreement provides a framework for the development, that includes the, the, you know, what the general development looks like. Then to your point, I think we could attach as an exhibit, uh, kind of the concept plan and make that part of it, recognizing there will be some refinement, uh, but then it's going to, it gave, gives some of the material terms, such as the sale price for the property. It gives the TIF benefits, which may be subject to change. Once they, they go out there and, and you see site conditions, they get their engineering done. But in order for them to move to the next phase, you know, the developer is going to need some, you know, commitment from the city that, yes, we are committed to do this, uh, this project, uh, recognizing the details need to be fleshed out, but we can put some, and maybe we put some, uh, language on the, the bottom of the exhibit, you know, these are, you know, subject to change upon, uh, you know, the, some things come later, landscape plans and so forth, but, uh, to have that, so it will at least give, when you guys are looking at it, it'll give the council sufficient information to make a decision, recognizing that unless and until everything is attached, this does not become the binding agreement between the parties. We need to have all of those, uh, exhibits, and they may be subject to change. When you see site conditions, I think the developer's been out there, he's worked with staff, they have a pretty good idea of what the, uh, what, what's going on out there. But that's kind of where we're at, in order to get it to the next stage. Uh, but again, putting a little meat on the, a little more meat on the bones might be helpful. Can that be done by tomorrow? That, I'm not sure, but certainly can be done in short order. No, you need to have it in by noon tomorrow.
Corrections by Tuesday, right?
By noon tomorrow, yeah. But yeah, we could work and, and try and meet that timeline.
Yeah, and before, I, I'm just saying, there, there's enough information out there, and there's already some documents out there that would give us a greater or broader understanding or definition of, of the product that we're talking about, instead of everything being so abstract and just a one-paragraph blurb of the description of, of the building, I think affords us all a little greater comfort to know at least where we started from and where we're moving to in going back and forth with stuff.
Believe that developers wants to make a few comments, just to clarify a few things?
Uh, I, I have no problem if you guys want to share those concept drawings. I feel very comfortable with those concept drawings, but they are exactly what I just said, concept drawings. We still have to go through schematic drawings, design development, uh, construction drawings. We still have not engaged in soil borings with our geotechnical engineer, our civil engineer. I've not engaged with my mechanical, electrical, plumbing, general contractor. It's a concept drawing that I've vetted out with my architects. Uh, I'm very happy with the concept drawing. I have no problem with you guys sharing that. I think it's very, um, informative, and I think it is going to, um, pretty much stay as-is. But, uh, as Ed was alluding to, uh, with regards to, um, you know, digging deeper with regards to environmental underground issues, we haven't done any of that exploration, and you never really know what you're getting into until you start to, you know, really excavate and do some, uh, additional soil borings. We have not gone that route. We are waiting until we have a redevelopment agreement that is teed up, that has all the terms set forth that we are comfortable with, and I believe that we are at that point. Um, but in terms of the concept drawings that have been provided, um, the massings and the, uh, conceptual renderings, um, I, I, I think that's a pretty good idea of the product that we want to bring. Um, it's also, it is, it is very similar to what we did in Wheeling. But with that being said, we still have to provide schematic drawings, design development, and construction drawings specifically for this project. We can't just like, you know, take that, take those drawings, pick them up and move them over. Um, so there is, there, unfortunately, there is still a lot of work that has to go into it, so.
Duly noted. Uh, Alderman Messina?
Yeah, based on the phase of where we're at, and how critical this is to moving to the next phase, I'd like to make a motion to approve the redevelopment agreement, the RDA for 372 North Wooddale Road. That is my motion.
Second.
So, sorry, subject to attorney approval.
Right, uh, items that we talked about in attorney approval. Yeah, thank you. I mean, we, I, I understand that there's going to be changes, it's just, we can at least look at that and go, this is where we started, if it shrinks or is adjusted, there's reasons to adjust it.
I'm all for that. I think that the work that's been done up until this point, um, is a very good representation of what we plan to build. Um, and if there are changes, um, I would think that they would be miniscule, and, you know, again, they're, they're conceptual drawings, you know, some of the changes might be with the interior aspects of the building that haven't even been identified yet, um, on the MEP side or the civil engineering side. Um, you know, we just, we, we haven't gotten to that level yet. But in terms of the overall massing of the, the, the project, the, uh, the site plan, I think that is very representative of what we plan to proceed with.
Excellent.
And I'd be very comfortable if, if you guys wanted to, uh, share that information openly.
Perfect. Alderman Sizmarski?
Since you're here, maybe you can answer a question. Is the groundbreaking and everything all included with the demolition?
Uh, so we usually, we usually don't demo a site until we're about 30 days from groundbreaking, uh, just in terms of, um, mobilizing the troops, fencing, excavation. Um, we, once we get a financial commitment from our lender, we know we're about 60 days out from breaking ground, and that's when we can start to plan to, um, mobilize and do the demolition, so. Doesn't take that long to, you know, to demo a site, it's probably only going to take 30 days, so. Unless there's environmental conditions that I don't know about, but we'll, we'll, we'll find out once we start to do some, uh, geotechnical explorations, so.
Any other questions?
Actually, I do have a question.
All right, see, I knew I'd drag it up.
I don't know if this is part of the building process, but to look at, you know, 230 units, people's vehicles, the traffic that will increase in this area, is there any allowance for maybe a traffic signal or something? I don't, I know it's a county road and it's close to Irving Park, but where commercial is, I mean, that is going to add a lot more cars to that area.
Mr. Cage?
Uh, yes, excellent question. So, um, as part of the planned unit development process, going through the CDC, a traffic report will be required from, from an engineer to study that. Uh, I know we've done, um, similar such things in this area, but, uh, it will be site-specific, detailing obviously how many units, how many trips, where those trips come and go from, and then what impact that does have on, uh, Wooddale Road. Um, so, obviously, um, driveways, and I think one of the, one of, this, um, brings to mind, one of the kind of preliminary meetings that, um, staff had with, uh, Mr. Friedman, was discussing exactly that point, where are the access points? Um, and that led to the second access point, um, which is adjacent to the city property, just here to the south, obviously from a fire access safety standpoint, so. That will all be analyzed, um, there'll be, um, a report by one of the consultants that will be, uh, made available during that process, so you'll get a chance to, um, review that, and, you know, give an opinion, good, bad, or somewhere in between. Uh, but it will, 230 units with the, with the vehicles that generates, will generate some traffic. Um, we do need to have a plan to deal with that, so, excellent point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Uh, there being none, uh, roll call?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. That passes. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
Uh, next items to be considered at future meetings, 390 billboards, September 9th, Route 83 annexation and PUD, October 2021, and UDA updates, fall slash winter. Is there anything, anybody else, there being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
For the Planning, Health, Safety, Judiciary, Ethics Committee to order, the minute taker wrote that everyone's still here. Roll call. Need approval of minutes for the July 8th, 2021 Public Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee minutes.
Make that motion.
Second.
Fellow in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One second here. First, you have a report and recommendation for approval of an agreement with the CTS group of the police department, or for the police department HVAC repair and replacement, and the amount not to exceed $484,744, that's my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Chief?
Yeah, uh, just a recap of this project. Back in May, city council gave us approval to enter into agreement with the CTS group. Michelle James and Sumit Ray are here to give a short presentation tonight on the findings of the HVAC system, um, and what their recommendations are for, uh, replacement of that system. So, uh, if, if your permission, we'll have a short presentation by them, so everyone has a good view of what we're looking at, so. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, good evening and thank you for having us this evening to present our recommendations for the HVAC system upgrade at the police station. Once again, my name's Michelle James, and I'm the lead account manager with the CTS group. With me as well is Sumit Ray, he's our, um, regional engineering manager that worked on the project. So, our intent is to take about 15, 20 minutes to give you a high-level overview of the system. I know you have quite a few things on the agenda, but if you have any questions at any point, just stop me and feel free to dig in. Should I use this here? Okay. Um, so the next slide we have here really just kind of indicates how our projects, um, how our approach works. Um, the CTS group, we do turnkey projects. Um, those projects have both the design and the implementation included. Um, so what we have here is, um, our company offers, uh, in-house engineers, we have in-house controls capabilities, um, and we also have in-house project managers, and we wrap that into one single contract, so we have a single point of contact with our client. Um, we also have a guaranteed upfront total cost of the project with no change orders, so we make sure that we do our due diligence upfront, so that everything's included. Um, if through the course of the project, there's any issues or things have been missed, uh, we do not come back to you, um, with any change orders. Uh, another important piece of that is that we have, um, a guaranteed energy savings component, um, and that really just makes sure that whatever we install is, uh, whatever, whatever we design is installed and commissioned and working properly. Um, so the next slide here really just shows you, um, the existing conditions of the police station. So this building is roughly 14,000 square foot. Um, it was built in 1991 and is currently connected to the city hall. Um, and the HVAC system and controls that we're looking at is currently aging and, in some cases, failing. Um, one of the first steps when we look at these types of projects is we want to look at how the, uh, the building itself is performing in terms of energy savings, and how it compares to other typical buildings. And so a tool that we use is called the EUI, or Energy Use Index, that's shown here. And so when we actually calculated that for the police station, it came out to be 110 KBTU per square foot per year. An average facility of this type is 63.5, so that kind of tells us there's an opportunity to take a look at this system and see how we might be able to improve it. So the existing conditions, um, in the police station for the HVAC, you currently have four hot water boiler systems, um, and those were installed in 1991, they were actually built in 1989. It's got a mid-level efficiency, they're non-condensing. Currently, you have two of those boilers down right now. Um, and it is currently, um, operating beyond its typical lifespan. Um, so in terms of providing conditioned air to this space, you also have an air handling unit system, and it is connected to a condensing unit to pro, to provide cooling to the building. That system, the air handling unit's also installed when the building was built in 1991. Um, and then the condensing unit was actually replaced in 2007, but you're currently experiencing some leaks with that system as well, and it's at the end of its life. Um, so in the individual spaces, you also have what are called variable air volume boxes, um, and those have hot water we heat coils in them. Um, and then you have two areas that are served by single-zone packaged, uh, rooftop units. The dispatch area, which was installed in 2010, and the conference room area, which is 1989. So the majority of that equipment is operating at or beyond its typical lifespan. So, one of the first things that we wanted to do in the building is actually do the load analysis to make sure that the systems originally were sized appropriately, and for whatever reason, the boilers are, are, uh, oversized quite a bit. So when Sumit and his team did a load analysis, we were able to reduce the size of those, right-size them. And now our recommendation is to install two 300 MBH high-efficiency, um, condensing-style boilers. So that will provide you enough load to heat the building, and it also provides you with some redundancy as well. Um, the air handling unit that I mentioned was roughly 30 years old. It's, you know, it's housed inside the building, the housing is actually in pretty good shape, so our recommendation is to actually go in and refurbish that unit and replace the components. So the fans, the belts, um, the DX cooling coil, and then that unit should last you another 25, 30 years, and it's the most cost-effective way to really approach that system. The condensing unit is at its end of its life, you're already experiencing leaks... You're already experiencing leaks. Our recommendation is to go ahead and replace that. And actually, if you look back in two thousand and seven, around that same timeframe, you replaced it the first time. So. The next recommendation would be to replace the two-packaged rooftop units. I'm sorry, yes?
Just a quick question. So what should we expect out of a, out of a condenser unit? So two thousand and seven doesn't seem like it's that old.
Right.
And mine at home is a lot older. So what should we expect?
Typically, according to ASHRAI, those units last fifteen to twenty years, depending on the maintenance and the exposure.
Okay.
So, you mean, it's not too far off.
Thank you.
Sure. So the packaged rooftop units that you have, the dispatch rooftop unit, we actually recommend removing that unit and installing a V, a single VA V-box that's connected to your air unit with reheat coil. And what that does is it actually puts that area all back on the air handling unit system. And so down the road, it's going, going to lower your replacement, your maintenance cost for that system instead of a packaged rooftop unit. For the community conference room, that unit's well beyond its typical lifespan. So the next piece of facility improvement measure that we're recommending is your control system. So currently, you have a pneumatic temperature control system. And as most of you know, the backbone to your HVAC system is the control and the monitoring of that system. And right now, this system is, is aging. It's been difficult for the police to control these systems. Literally, the tubes are falling apart. We've illustrated some of the pictures here. And so our recommendation at this point is to upgrade that system to a direct digital control system that's web-based. And there are quite a few advantages to that. I'm going to touch on a few of them. I'm going to hand it over to Sumit to talk about it. But because it's web-based, you know, you're going to have the ability to access this system from any device that has internet capability. And that's going to give you the ability to change schedules, to troubleshoot, to respond to issues more quickly.
Sir, can I?
Yes.
Mike's the chairman.
Oh, sir.
I'll give you. It's okay with me.
I, it's top of mind because it just had that, and it had this happen to me. So it's web-based.
Yes, sir.
Power went out. I couldn't access all the cameras I have in my basement in our other home. But I have all these cameras, but dummy me, power's out, so I can't access them. How does somebody override that?
So this is, this is like, when it's a web-based, it can be accessible from anywhere. Maybe your house is down, battery is down, but you can have somewhere else. If you have a, you know, cell tower or anything, any other way, you can connect as well.
And the building, the building does have a full.
Backup generator.
You have backup.
Full generator for anything that's kept in monthly by public work.
Could you do that remotely? Like, would it go to you or would it go to, who would it go to for remote? Like, being able to remote in if there was troubleshooting that needed to be done?
We can set it up the way you want. Any, anybody can have it. And we have a different layer of password protection. So we can have a basic and then admin level as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. My question is, why do I need that?
That's a very good question.
We've heated buildings and homes for years. Police departments, they're twenty-four hours a day. We don't abandon the building at any point in time. Why is that something I need?
Uh, I mean, some of the advantages, again, of the direct digital system are the ability to be able to monitor, monitor and troubleshoot it. It's going to allow you to lower your operating costs down the road, extend the life of the equipment. There are some energy-saving advantages to that as well that allow us to reduce the consumption in the building with the strategies that we use, as well as there's some grant opportunities associated with that.
And if I could touch base too, I think the, we need to get away from the pneumatic tubing because it's literally falling apart. So it's going to a direct control system that happens to be web-based. We're not going out there going, well, we need a web-based system, but this has the ability to be web-based, and it also would allow the technicians to diagnose if there's something going on remotely too. So that's, that's not the, the goal of this. It just happens to be a component that's a part of this.
But in between the tube system and the web-based, there's other systems. So.
Yeah, I'll defer.
In some of the language you use, it's we can and we can monitor. So is there a maintenance monitoring agreement? Are you, you know, you're, you're making a statement, you're going to prolong the life of it using the web-based system. So.
It is an, it is a non-proprietary system, which means that multiple contractors can work on it. That's another advantage of this type of system too, is that you have a larger pool of contractors that can work on the DDC non-proprietary system. There are proprietary systems out there that limit who can use it. Our, our system that we're recommending is non-proprietary. But in terms of DDC versus pneumatic, that also provides you a larger pool of contractors that can work on that as well. And that means the response time's better, your, your maintenance costs are going to be better. One of the things I bring up here on this slide is the three-year remote service support system that we offer whenever we install these systems. And that means that you can contact us whenever there's issues during that three-year time period that we can help with. And we also provide training, not only to your staff, but any of the contractors that you have in the area that you want to work on the system.
So let me touch on that, the good point you said about the why you want to change it, right? If you look at the pneumatic system, it is an old technology, like your analog phone, right? It works, but it's not worked that well. And the weak point is the compressor. If the compressor goes down, whole system goes down. Another point is you cannot monitor it. You don't know it's working or not. Only you come, come back and say it's not working. So it is too late at that time. And this is so old, you're not going to get parts for it, and there is not too many people to fix it. So we are trying to slowly getting out of the pneumatic and going to DDC. And DDC has, you know, the web-based system is the add-on. It's the icing on the cake. Then DDC is, is direct digital control. You can monitor and control it. The pneumatic is on and off. You put a air pressure at a fifteen psi tank, you shut it off, it closes. But you cannot modulate it. So the DDC you can modulate, ten percent, twenty percent, go all the way to zero to hundred percent. So that gives you more control and more energy savings. For example, outside air, when you need so much energy to heat the building, the energy, the electric and gas, come with outside air. You have to heat and pull down air. So if you reduce the outside air, and why are you going to reduce it? So many people are not there. When the building is designed, it's designed for X number of people in the building, but you don't have all the time. So we're going to put the system in there, we'll see how many people are there, and we're going to reduce outside air. So you can save a lot of money. And how do you know that so many people are not there? You put a CO2 sensor. Like, the CO2 sensor detect that how many, how much you generated, how much outside air you need. So that should modular. So a lot of advantages there. I can tell you, most of the places we put it, I can see twenty-two, twenty-five percent, if not more, cells. Yes, please.
You have a follow-up with that?
Yeah, I do. Because this is a great learning experience and conversation. So in this particular building, so based on what you just said, if this is a school, an auditorium, or a building that has a greater fluctuation in people, right? Each person admits X amount of BTUs, so I understand that you'd have that. But this is pretty cut and dry. It's a pretty stable amount of people that are in the building consistently. So again, I'm not seeing the total benefit. I do like some of the things you're saying. I, I get that. But is, as an expense, as part of this project, does that add ten percent to the project, five percent to the project?
Do you have a percentage-wise?
Could we speak to that?
Pneumatics, pneumatics versus the DDC.
And with the dollar, dollar wise?
Yeah. Because I'm looking at the whole thing. This is almost a half a million dollars, which is, I don't know, if I did the math, thirty-two, thirty-three dollars a square foot of the building. That's fairly expensive. So I'm just looking at and going, what are we getting for this money? And are we overbuilding a system or overengineering a system? Albeit, it might be a better system. You know, is it more than we need?
So typically, the cost-wise, the thirty percent is your MEP, the mechanical system in any building. If you build it, the thirty percent cost is for mechanical. And here, of course, we're not replacing all of it. So mechanical and controls in that, that category are put in there, around thirty percent maybe. I don't know. I haven't looked at the numbers yet. I don't know off the top of my head. But I would say that this is the, the best system or the better system you can put in there right now for the control standpoint. You have obsolete system. And the system we are recommending is, is totally non-proprietary. You can use anybody's system. Like tomorrow, you can buy some other boiler or chiller or condenser, you can plug in the same system. So the control says non-proprietary open system, and you can plug in any system you want. So there's a big advantage to that. And top of that, you can monitor remotely. So and most of the time, the system fails, you know, holidays and Christmas time, when nobody's there.
We're always there.
Yeah, yeah, right. But it will take time for you. Unless you are really cold or really hot, you don't know the system is down. And sometimes it might have, the water leaks, leaking all over the place, no alarm, no alert, nothing going on. So those are the things. And top of that, more efficient, and you can save more money on that as well.
And I believe too, because of the reduced maintenance and operation that you're going to be spending on the DDC system versus a pneumatic system, I think you're going to outweigh the, any initial cost difference since you have a pneumatic system. In the long run, I think you're going to pay a lot less for this system.
Alderman Jacob?
This, this system, it's totally separate from the rest of the building. Is that correct?
Correct. The DDC system and the HVAC is separate from the Villatall.
And where, where is that separation? Is it just the police department? Is it the rotunda? Or where, where exactly is it separate?
It's just the police department.
Right, from the rotunda over where that building attaches.
Okay. So if we did this system here down the road, that doesn't mean we have to do the same system on this side of the road.
No, you're flexible with that. You can add this building on to that control system. That would be one of the benefits, is that because that system is in place, it makes it easier for you to add on this building, and it's going to be more cost-effective.
But it's not, it's not something that's necessary just because we do that over there. Something happens here.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I know I don't want to. Mayor?
It's all right. So going back to the last slide, you talked about two boilers. We have four. You're going down to two, be more cost-effective, more energy-efficient, all that. I take it this works just like a regular rack system when you have compressors and whatnot, correct? So if one goes down, the other one is enough to handle the entire building?
That's a very good question. I think the majority of the time, one boiler is going to be enough capacity during heating season to cover the whole building. You may have very cold, unusually cold, outside-of-the-norm days, in which case you would have to bring on a second boiler. But I think when you did the load analysis, I think that you're using, what is it, three-hundred-and-seven MBH?
Right. Your peak is three-hundred-and-seven MBH, and we are sizing two boiler, three-hundred and three-hundred. So ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of time, you just need one boiler, one as a backup. So if it's really, really cold day, you might need both, very small amount of time.
And we would alternate those to have the same.
Yes, that's one of the other thing here, this DDC.
That was going to be my next question. Do they alternate?
Yes, sir.
So you're not using one constantly and the other one just sits idle?
So we can alternate. We can do night setback. We can do outside air. So a lot of, at least four, ten or fifteen different controls we can do now with DDC, which you cannot do with, with the pneumatics.
You said you, we had four prior to this?
Yes, sir.
And two are only working. Is there a reason why only two, are two broken right now? So what happens when we go down to two and one breaks down and we don't, and we need both of them online? Like you said, if it gets too cold, you need both online. What's, and the one goes down, what, what then? Then you just got to, I mean, do we just, you just put a shirt on and, or a jacket on and wait for the, someone to fix the other one?
So as I said, now if you, if your peak, your peak demand or peak load will be three-hundred-and-seven MBH, and we are sizing three-hundred. So think about how close they are. What are the chances? And nobody, you know, you should not design for the full load or above all the time. That will happen maybe one or two hours, or one or two days a year, but you're going to spend a lot of money, you know, capital cost, just to cover that few. So in ASHRAI, everybody recommends that go up to ninety-eight percent or ninety-five percent, right?
Mayor?
So in simple terms for the residents that are listening, so there's two of them. One by itself is almost, I believe you said ninety-three percent. So that's if you're running at peak. And so if one goes down, this is just, is similar to the rack system had in grocery stores and whatnot. You have five compressors. Two go down, the other three will handle it. This is the same thing right here.
Mr. Catalano?
Yeah. Chief, did we go through the bid and process on this? This is the only bid we got, or?
Yeah, I'll let them touch on that, but this is part of the Illinois State Statute's law for energy service companies, which council approved going through, and then they go out and seek qualified quotes. But it does allow us to go into this process that the guaranteed energy savings that happen, kind of in line with the, with the Green Committee too, is reducing the energy cost. And then they go out and seek the final quotes and bring us back a price. And it's my understanding that there was quite a range, but one was up to double what the cost was. So.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Oh, thank you very much. This is all tidying. Brad, the next word I want to hear out of your mouth is absolutely. If one of those boilers were to blow up, that would be a gigantic sinkhole where the police department now sits. So the question, do we have a specific boiler insurance policy? Because it's excluded from the net, the normal fire insurance.
Mr. Wilson?
What's the magic word?
Absolutely.
You're my guy. Thank you. I can sleep with it.
To be fair, we would have to verify that. But yes, we do get the inspections through the state fire marshal. So yeah, it's, it's in there.
Hartford used to be the king of the boilers. It's a special policy only for boilers. Did you ever see a boiler blow, folks?
But the good news is, you have a hot water boiler here, not steam. So chances are much low on a very low pressure. So you have to put in that.
No sinkhole. Younger? Oh, it's not my day?
So the next slide that we have up here really just talks about the grant funding. Oh, I'm sorry. We always, we have a grant department, division, and so we're always seeking to find ways that we can reduce the first cost of the projects that we work on. And fortunately, through the utility companies, there are a couple of opportunities. So through both the gas and the electric company, we've got seven percent boiler savings, ten percent temperature control savings, as indicated in the contract. So that allows us to seek a grant of roughly a little under five thousand dollars. And so CTS will put together all of that paperwork on the front end and on the back end on behalf of the city. And that's something that we offer, not just on these projects, that once you partner with us, if you've got things that you are doing in-house or down the road, you can come to us and we'll help you with that grant process. We just built a new public works building for Mundeline, and as an example, we took advantage of the ComEd New Construction Grant Program to be able to get them some grant money there. In various cities, we've done street lighting. So there's a lot of programs out there that we can help with. So we've talked mostly about these benefits, but these are the benefits that we hope to achieve with this project. The last one is just master planning services. Again, partnering with us will, will be able to help you with this building and others if you need to, to do long-term plans. So here we have a summary of the two facility improvement measures, the HVAC system and temperature controls. And as Chief Estes mentioned, you know, we have the design in-house, but we, once we put that package together, we go out and we competitively bid this out. We did that to multiple local contractors here in Wooddale. And the contractor that you see that provided us with this low number, which is five thirteen, four forty-four, is a local contractor that we've actually worked with before. All the bids met our design criteria, but they were the low responsible bidder. And as the chief mentioned, the other local contractor that was the high bid came in at seven forty-seven. So we're pretty happy with these numbers. We actually, even, even since the first time we budgeted this project, there have been price increases. And so we were still, through the competitive process, able to keep it within budget. So we've offered two options here that we would recommend the city incorporate into the recommendations. Our base bid looks at a ninety-six point five percent high-efficient boiler. Our recommendation, given the overall payback of the project, would be for the city to look at the mid-level high-efficiency boilers, which is the eighty-five percent. It still allows you to get the grant money that we're looking at. And the difference really that you're going to see in energy savings is minimal. And given how the, the city actually has a franchise agreement, we would recommend that that makes more sense. That provides a deduct of fifteen thousand, five hundred. The second thing that we looked at is the condensing unit copper piping. That appears to be in very good shape, and we don't recommend that you need to replace that at this time. That also offers another thirteen thousand, three hundred. So with that, our recommendation would be to, to go with the four eighty-four, seven forty-four.
Mayor?
Yeah, I got a question on the, so on the piping, the content, condensing piping. So my understanding was, when you're changing out a unit, change it all out because there's residues and whatnot inside the pipes that could affect the new unit. I vaguely remember this stuff. I mean, it's been years. You know, depending on the oil and whatnot. You know, depending on the oil and whatnot and.
This one is only for the water, going back and forth. And we looked at the piping and looked at the inside, and this is working right now. So we don't see much residue or anything, but we're going to do a maintenance, food maintenance on the piping. Meaning, any bends you have, anything like, you know, elbow and stuff like that, we're going to clean it out or we're going to replace it. But with the straight run pipe, it's very good shape. I looked at that. So we're going to replace, we are recommending not to replace that. It's not necessary.
Alderman Woods?
Thanks. So why would we not want to go to the more high efficient boiler, since our whole conversation tonight is about efficiency? I know you touched on the return, but if our goal is, we're talking about the Green Committee and efficiency, and those guys, and those things are pretty efficient, why would we not want to just go ahead and do that?
I could touch on that a little bit too. I, we did ask them to come up with some options for reduced pricing too, to try and be responsible with the budget. I didn't know exactly where those were going to come in. So there is some increased efficiency with this. Certainly if council wanted to go with ultra-high efficiency boilers, you know, it would add that additional cost onto there. But we did ask them to come in with some cost reduction options where possible, but still increase in efficiency. So maybe you want to expand on that a little bit, but we were putting a little stuff on the side to try and get the price down too.
So that you know, right now, your boiler efficiency is seventy-eight percent. So we are thinking about ninety-six point five condensing boiler, very super high efficiency, and this is the mid level. So choice is yours. So either way, you are better off than what you have now.
Right, so if I, if I can, well, yeah, I mean, we're increasing, what's that, seven percent from the seventy-something to the eighty-five, which doesn't seem like a lot in today's time. On top of you telling me that I need this fancy control system that's going to save me all this money. But it's not important enough to get the better boiler. So I'm, I'm just having a trouble weighing those two things and putting them together and going, over here it makes sense to spend money. Over here, not so much.
Are you, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking at this when I looked at windows. Now I can have double pane windows with insert blinds, or I can have triple pane windows with insert blinds. That was an add-on with the blinds, right? That was in there. I'm looking at a cost savings perspective in this case. Kudos, great positioning, great sales technique. I like seeing savings in the back end. But if we're not going to realize the cost savings, if you're saying that there really is not a significant cost savings, I just look at it as just one feature, right? I'm not really set on, to me, when you talked about going to the, is it DDS?
DDC.
DDC system, for me, the big win really is how the mayor talked about being able to switch between the two. And that life efficiency piece of it is important. But I don't know, I appreciate you guys putting that in there. I personally am okay with the eighty-five percent unless you guys can justify the difference. But I'm looking at it from the dual pane, triple pane. Did I really see the difference? And that's where I was like, no, we'll stick with the double pane. We're good, so.
Like you, like you said, you won't notice the difference until that sensor comes on with CO2 or, what you said, it notices and resets it or sets it lower. So you're not using it as much, correct? So that, well, the savings we'll find over the year more than what you, you can't obviously look in the future and see how many people are going to be in that building every single day or, or any given time. So like you said, instead of using full pneumatic, whatever, all the way to his highest efficiency, instead it could fluctuate.
No, that's seven should be there. This is, we're talking about only the boiler itself. So how much coming in, gas coming in, how much hot water going out, right? Boiler itself is less efficient in this case, eighty-five percent versus ninety-six percent. So there is some savings, right? Because you're not burning that much gas with the high efficiency one. But the cost is also higher, so that is the, you know, balance.
Right. Mayor?
Does it make a difference, the, I look at the age of the building, that's part of what I was thinking about and I forgot to mention. Does it help if this building being at the age it's at, does it help to go to the ninety-six percent efficiency versus the eighty-five?
So typically, whenever we look at HVAC systems, and we look at it from a lifecycle standpoint. And so when you look at the life of the equipment and then you factor in the energy efficiency, is it going to pay back in that time period to go to the ninety-six percent versus the eighty-five percent? It's not. And so that's why we would recommend it here. And we also look at the grants, and we want to make sure that if we're going from a ninety-six percent efficient, which has a grant number associated with it, to the eighty-five percent, we don't want to kick ourselves in the amount of money that you can get from a first cost standpoint. And so you're still getting grant money for the eighty-five percent efficiency and it doesn't degrade the fifteen thousand de-duct.
The same amount of grant money, or the difference is negligible?
It, you get, it's, it's maybe a couple of thousand dollars different.
Yeah, a couple of thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Not enough to offset the difference?
Exactly.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor?
So to the ninety-six percent, I mean, so when I did my house, I had to redo everything. I went with a two-stage. And basically, you hear when needs a little more oomph, you hear that motor kick up. And I can tell you my electric bill, my gas bill, everything went down, right? And he mentioned windows, same thing. Honestly, I should have did the blinds in the middle, oh, we'll just put some, some, you know, shades and whatever. Honestly, all that fancy drapery and whatnot, it's costing me more money if I would have did it the other way. I always tend to lean to the heavier side when I'm doing things, like when I bought a truck. I bought the bigger engine because I'm hauling stuff. I know you just said it's not much difference. But I don't know, I'm kind of, I usually lean to the heavier side, just to cover. I mean, for fifteen thousand dollars for twenty years, I don't know.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so, well, two things. One, to put it in perspective, the fifteen thousand dollars is roughly one dollar a square foot. When we're already at thirty-two, negligible when you spread it across that. Secondly, the eighty-five percent, so fifteen percent of all our fuel is wasted, to put it in a different term, correct? Versus the ninety-seven, which would be three percent wasted. As we all know, especially with the climate in Washington and Springfield, fuel costs, fossil fuels are going to rise, right? So I don't know how you did the calculations and what you used as accelerators for all those. But if prices go up, at least like I think they are, that eleven percent differential becomes a bigger number than I think we think it will be. And again, I go back to, if energy efficiency is a thing, right? And that's supporting your argument for the control system, right? Doesn't matter if I believe it or buy it or not, so I, I can't justify one because you're telling me I need this fancy control system, which I'm sure has a number attached to it that we don't know yet. And it's probably greater than that number we're talking about right now. But then we're willing to go, ah, we'll just get the cheaper boilers and let it go. So Chief, if you want to speak.
I, I agree with that too, because we realize that this is a lot of money. And I think from my end, we put some pressure on to come in with some alternatives that we could reduce that cost if possible. I'm not an energy expert, but I know the budget. And we tried to come in under what our projected budget was. So, you know, we'll, we'll take the responsibility for trying to get it to that, that low level, because we know it is a lot of money. If council wants to go with the ninety-six percent efficiency, we're certainly not opposed. We're not taking the stand against it, but we did ask them to come in with some alternate pricing. So that's, that's kind of, that's why it's there, and we're trying to be responsible with the dollars.
And I'm not necessarily making the argument to spend it. I'm just trying to balance those competing interests out, that I'm spending money over here. It's good money spent, but it's not so good to spend it over here. That's all.
Mr. Wilson?
I might regret saying this, but I feel compelled to say that we don't by and large get a gas bill for this building in the police department. So I don't know that the price of natural gas going up is really that great of a concern from a budgetary standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let it go.
Sit. Any other questions?
Um, this is really just the last slide to kind of let you know where we are from a status standpoint, and then possible next steps if the council moves forward. So if we do get final approval this evening and then at the full board next week, our immediate step would be to start our supplemental preparation, our grant preparation, and then get started on the actual hot water system. There is a little typo on this schedule. We anticipate the heating work to take about a month to a month and a half in total. And so we would begin in August, at the end of August, if approved. But we'd be looking at October fifteenth for the full completion, not September fifteenth. That was a typo. We would be beginning the controls work, as I mentioned. We've got an estimated overall completion of the project in February, but we could finish at the end of December. But we won't know until we actually place our controls order, because the lead times are fluctuating quite a bit right now. So we put, worst case scenario in here is February. The condensing units that I've shown here in November, those have a longer lead time. So again, we would be starting and finishing that work in November and then finishing that easily by December. So just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what that would look like. We will have a much more detailed schedule when the project begins.
Mayor?
You just said it might be an issue with getting the controls. That's why you're adding a couple of extra months. So when we put in those new boilers, the heaters are going to work for the police department this winter, right? Just in case those controls don't come in?
No, we'll, we'll have controls.
It's not going to work?
No, I'm sorry. It will work, yes. A couple of things will happen. I mean, number one, in order to make sure that you've got heating, we're going to utilize the existing boilers that you have right now and then do a turnover once we get the new systems up and running. But the controls, I'm just saying that the, the lead times are fluctuating a bit on various parts. That will not be an issue during the course of the implementation of it. We just gave you worst case scenario on final substantial completion of the building. Does that make sense?
As long as the police department has heat this winter, otherwise, I know.
I mean, we're. Worst case scenario, we always have a backup plan in, in terms of we'll bring in temporary heating equipment or cooling equipment. If for some reason something crazy happened, then that's always a backup plan that we have. And there's no charge to the city for that. That's something that we include.
Yeah, you usually have heat when you don't need it and cooler when you do.
Correct.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, could, is it possible to get some information on the control system and boilers that you could get to us?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Further questions?
I do have one more.
Mayor?
Alderman Jacob brought something up about this building and whatnot. So if a couple of years down the road, we want to attach that one, we're just basically adding a boiler to the system, right? It's like a rack system, right? Same, same principles.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would evaluate all of the HVAC systems in this building to determine what's going to be the best solution. It may be adding a boiler and then routing the piping down here into maybe another air handling unit. We would also look at packaged rooftop units. We don't really just look at a cookie cutter design. We're going to look at a bunch of different ways, but it's possible.
This was piecemeal together over the years, so. And at some point, this building's going to need some work. We know that. At some point.
A wrecking ball.
And, and we will try to get those documents in the packet tomorrow. She said they, they should be able to get those. We'll try to have that for next week too.
You use that, the end of the presentation?
Yes.
Any more questions?
Well, you know what, I think I just, I just.
You've had enough.
No, no, never enough.
We'll Randy first, if you.
No, just thank you for your efforts. Obviously, you're spearheading the project, so it's.
Fine job.
Yeah, great job. Thank you for that. And I'd like to make a motion to move forward with approval of an agreement with CTS Group for the police department HVAC repair and replacement in the amount not to exceed four hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Sorry. You already made, I already made that motion and there was already a second, uh.
Was there? Okay.
What?
Well, then my compliments.
I said it before you guys even started questioning. We made a motion, you guys, you guys, you guys, yeah, it's been going on for a while, so.
The motion's second. Take my compliment. Great job. Thank you.
Mr. Woods? Final question on.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Since we're replacing all the units, the rooftops or air handlers, whatever, up there, and given the COVID world that we live in, I know that there are some things that we can add to those systems, right? To clean the air, whatever their ionizers or whatever, eye waves or whatever those are in the marketplace. Could we, if you don't have that information today, is some add-on information, if that's something that we could add on? And what that cost might be?
Absolutely. We can definitely get you some options on what we could do in terms of adding that on and the benefits to, to the city here. But I'm glad you brought that up, because that's actually another benefit of the DDC system versus a pneumatic, is that you're going to be able to utilize the control system to be able to get more air changes in the facility if you want, bring in more outside air if you need to. That's going to be a lot easier to do than a pneumatic system, so should have brought that up earlier. Good question.
Thank you. And this goes back to my greater point of if you're building a system. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Well, that to Kurt, quote tail him, is there any grant out there for anyone who's doing COVID? Protection?
Um, you know, I, I'll, I'll.
Like he's talking about?
I'll have to dig into it and see.
Money is allocated for rebuilding's or anything?
For the city. I mean, that's a good question. I know that there are S R fundings that we are submitting for a lot of various school districts for those types of things, and I'll have to look and see what is available to Wooddale.
If you could look into it, that way we wouldn't, we might not have to shut it, you know, we had to shut down City Hall for a couple of times. But if we have something in place where you could say it's static free or verb germ free, but.
I'll definitely research that.
Thank you. All right, any of a roll call, please?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That passes. Actually, I have a request for an additional Class A liquor license.
Thank you.
Have some coffee. Coffee's for closers.
Glad you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just as a refresher, city council authorizes liquor license in the city and the liquor commissioner approves those licenses. We do have an applicant that is looking to open a Hawaiian-themed restaurant and bar in Georgetown Square, replacing, there, there used to be a previous lounge over there a couple of years ago that did close down. Completely separate ownership, but the applicants are here tonight. If the council would like to hear a short, just a couple of minutes on what their concept for the location is. Yeah, so if you guys want to go up to the, introduce yourselves and just kind of give an overview of your concept.
Hi.
Randy, this is my brother Ron Rule.
Obviously, you know which one leads.
I'm the, I'm the older, better-looking brother of the two.
There you go.
Okay, so long story short, I'm a Wood Dale resident. I've been here for a couple of years. I think this is a great town and I want to start a business here. My brother, he'll do some more speaking later, but he's got the culinary background. I got a business background. I came across this place, used to be the Koya Tiki Lounge. It's been closed for about five years. I talked with the landlord. It's a very nice, everything we need is pretty much in there. So we're looking to reopen it with the same concept, only a little different. For example, we're going to be a tropical place. It's going to be called Pa'ehana, which in Hawaiian means after work. We intend not to have any gambling machines. We don't want that. We don't even want any TVs in the place. We're open in a nice, quiet place, dimly lit, coming in for a nice drink after work, like the name implies, have a nice meal, relax. Anything you want to add?
Just a little bit of my background. I'm a La Cordon Bleu graduate, about fifteen years experience in culinary. I can do pre-natural anything. I'm very much into international foods in general. That's what I've always specialized in. Quite frankly, I'm looking forward to my brother running the front of the house, me just staying in my kitchen and having fun back there. Everything's going to be scratch made. I don't believe in frozen foods. I won't even have a microwave in my kitchen. It's all going to be fresh made, to order as, you know, by your request. I would like to give you guys a little bit more of a menu. Trouble is right now is I've got too much I want to make for my menu until I actually get the kitchen up and running to decide what's going to be functional and what's not. It's going to be kind. we get closer, I can start narrowing things down, knowing what will work in this kitchen and what won't. And once we open, quite frankly, it'll probably change depending on the clientele, what the public wants. There's this weird new wave, I don't understand, where companies like to tell their customers off and tell them they're wrong. I personally like to tell my customers they're right so they come back, and if they're wrong, they're right because they're the customer, and I would like to cater to them. And like my brother said already, it's going to be a quiet place. We don't want to be a bar, a tavern, anything like that. We want to be a lounge. You come in for a date, you come in for after work. It's just somewhere nice. We're even considering banning cell phones at the bar if you're staying in the bar area. No cell phones up there, because again, we want you to get away from all that. It's a nice, relaxing Hawaiian atmosphere. We'll have classic American foods and Hawaiian and a little Asian fusion going on.
Spam.
That's my enemy. That's why I talk on the food. He'll talk more on the bar end if you're interested in that.
Then on the bar end of it-
A lot of spam.
Yeah.
There will be a lot of spam.
Then on the bar end of it, I mean, it's like the client tour going for a play being like my age and older. Our hours, we plan to have an hours like 4:00 PM to 11:00. Opening a little earlier on the weekends, we do like a Sunday brunch and like Saturday lunch. Like I say, I don't want this to be an all-night hangout, no. Come on in after work.
The latest on weekend, maybe midnight to close. We don't want to be openly. What happens when you're openly? Trouble. We don't want that. We don't want it for us, we don't want it for the community. We want everyone to be happy there.
So the applicant, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just going to mention that the applicant is applying for a Class A liquor license because some people might have a drink without a meal. That would be the appropriate license, either the A or the AR. And our license has to have meals served while they're actually consuming alcohol, so they're looking for kind of a mix of that. So the A or the AR would be the appropriate license for this type of restaurant.
Any questions?
No pokey or poi, is it?
I'm sorry?
Pokey or poi?
If you want it, we'll make it-
I actually do, do, poke bowls are actually very simple. It's sushi only in a bowl. Poi, I definitely will have poi, because I'll be honest with all you folks here, poi is horrible. However, until you've tasted it, you won't know that, and everyone should try at least once in their life.
Go ahead. Now you want to ask them? You got Bud and Wood?
No. Alderman Woods?
Do I ask you or do I wait for you?
Alderman Woods? So my question is, well, one, thank you for trying to open up the business. We appreciate that and wish you all the success. But the prior people that were in there, that was one of the issues, was the size of the kitchen and their inability to put out a broad array of foods, let's say.
Quite frankly, that's because they're not doing it properly. I, the last major kitchen I was running was in Elgin. It was the smallest kitchen in the city of Elgin, and when I say it was the smallest, I'm meaning your home kitchen was probably larger. I was working in it. I would do 230 people a night easily. It's all management of how you make use of your skills as a chef and of the space you have available to you. It's entirely possible. I, the reason I'm not cooking now is because we're still trying to clean things up and get it cleaned up. I don't see an issue with me doing a volume in there. I mean, it's not a huge place, so it's not like our occupancy is probably going to be 300, 400 people at a time in there. I don't see that being an issue, quite frankly. I've got room for my coffee ovens, I have room for my fryers, I have room for my range top and my black room. It's all's I need.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think they served too many different foods last time. Alderman Ames?
If this is approved, what's your timeframe for opening?
As soon as possible.
Essentially, the ball's in your court on that one, is the board.
So you've been remodeling and-
No, actually, no, that's one thing that turned me on to this place. We're really not changing much. The person who had it before took excellent care of it. All the infrastructure's already in place. The bathrooms are beautiful.
Oh, the bathrooms are, quite frankly, oh, they're next to part of the restaurant.
We're not doing any construction. I mean, they're basically, just basically cleaning the cobwebs, often wiping down the barns. I mean, the place is actually in phenomenal shape, and that was one of the things that turned me on to it.
Yeah, there's not a lot of remodeling. Just like I said, updating, maybe to paint the coat here or there. There is, I'll be honest with you guys, there's a small leak in our roof in the front. The landlord is aware about that. He's going to have that repaired for me. There is a little damage there. So once that wall is replaced, I'll fix that damaged area. And actually, that'll be on him as a landlord, I believe, so that would really be about the only construction that's going to be taking place there, is fixing the water damage from the water leak.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any other questions?
I look forward to seeing all the opening day now.
Alderman Jacob?
I just want to thank you for, you know, opening up a restaurant in town. We want more restaurants and places for people to go, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reservations, can we vote on?
Roll call. Roll call. Thank you.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Welcome to Wooddale.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you in the L.A.'s.
Good luck.
Yes, I'd love to be considered a future meetings. This is probably one I was asking about chief, was PD Space Needs Design? That is yours, right? I had a question on it. What is, what is that? Oh, if you want to go talk to them.
It's okay. So that's the, that's currently in the budget. It was, it was approved to do a analysis of like our old grade room that's closed in some of the areas and then come back with a budget to do a little bit of reorganization down there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to be added, future meeting? If not, I'll ask for, or roll call, or not roll call, adjournment?
Need a motion.
Need a motion for adjournment?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, please note, all the same people who we are still present. Up first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting on July 8th, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Report and recommendations. Up first, I think, Alan, you have a short presentation. This is the approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Shorter Asphalt for the fiscal year 2022 pavement patching program in an amount not to exceed $96,675,000. That's my motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. No presentation on this, just very briefly, this is part of our preventative maintenance program for road construction along with crack sealing and rejuvenation. There's a list of locations in your packet on the last page there of where these patches are located.
Yeah. You guys good with that? We agreed to keep short and sweet. Any questions?
Short and sweet's good.
Great. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Sewertech LLC for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 sewer cleaning and TV program in an amount not to exceed $59,622.70, and that is also my motion.
Second.
Director Lang, you had a quick presentation on that?
Yeah, very, thank you, Chairman. Very quickly, just want to run through this, because we've talked about I and I at length in the past. Public Works staff had been televising and cleaning some of the sewers in the study area to give to RJN to use in the design of the rehabilitation schedule. However, what we're finding is a lot of these sewers are in too poor of a condition for use with our camera, and they require specialized cleaning and televising equipment, such as a root saw, barrel saw, and specialized cleaning nozzles, which are expensive to purchase, and we feel like we're better off going with the company that does this more often. So we put it out to bid. We budgeted about $300,000 for the next two years, and the bids came back rather favorably, just under $60,000 to complete both sections. Here you see the area that they would be working in. In blue and red, the area in green there north of Irving Park Road is what's been completed already. Like I said, the idea was to do this over two years, but since the bids came in so favorably, we recommend just doing both sections this year. Here you see some of the sewers that we're dealing with, the protruding laterals, the broken pipe on bottom there. Again, on the right there, protruding lateral with some root infiltration. And that's all I had on this item, Chairman.
I had a question. So I know a couple of times we've tapped you guys to do some televising for residents, private residents, I guess. Would that part be outsourced, or would you still do that in-house?
We still do, we have a push camera that we use for residents' private sanitary sewers. This is larger diameter sewers, which we have a crawler that we purchased a couple of years ago. However, you can see the condition of the sewers here. We risk every time we go in there getting the crawler stuck or damaged in sewers like this, or you just can't proceed through because you don't have the proper equipment to remove these protruding laterals before you can continue televising.
Okay, great. Any question? We have a motion, we have a second. Mayor?
So tell me on that photo on the left, when it's, you can't put a liner in that. That's when we repair the pipe, correct?
Director Lang? Correct, man, that would be a pipe repair.
Oh, Mayor?
No, no, I just wanted-
Any questions? All right, roll call, please. Anything?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. And we also have an approval and agreement between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the fiscal year 2022 management of the industrial pretreatment program in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
To move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Finally, an approval and agreement with Furpal Construction USA LLC for Roy Drive Water Main Lining in an amount not to exceed $49,200. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, okay. And then Director Lang, I know you have a short presentation on that.
I do. Thank you, Chairman. One of the goals of the Public Works Department is to cut down on lost revenues associated with water main breaks and leaks. Obviously, you have the lost revenues from the loss of the water itself and equipment and staff time to repair. This area is probably familiar to several of the Aldermen as an area that we've had quite a few breaks in at the past. So you also are probably aware that later this year, we'll be beginning our water distribution master plan, which will help us prioritize projects, but we did want to get a head start on repairing some water main this year. So we budgeted $50,000 into capital improvement plan for water main repair this year as we were studying areas that we knew we had quite a number of breaks at. The open trench method proved to be too cost prohibitive for these locations, so we identified this stretch as an area that could be a good candidate for water main lining, which is relatively new project type for the City of Wooddale here. But given the right application, we find that it is just as reliable as replacing the pipe and can even save costs in certain applications. So you see here some of the considerations to take into account when deciding for lining or open cut method. You have the water main age, the material, the size, the condition. You have the impacts to the residents and the traffic pattern here. You have the number of services. In this case, there's only one service on this line. And then you have the constructibility issues. If it's in pavement, obviously, it's going to be more expensive to restore. There's several large trees above this water main, which would have to be removed if we were to go with open cut, and then you have other utility conflicts. Down at the bottom there, you see a segment before and after lining. The first step is actually go in and they clean out the main, and then they pull through the epoxy, I'm sorry, the liner material, and then it's cured in place with an epoxy resin. It's used by numerous communities throughout the area, including Itasca, Bensonville, Lombard, and many others. The reason we wanted to go with Furpal infrastructure is that it does not require the use of special fittings for repairs in the future, which some other water main lining products do. Also, the services, the one service in this instance can be reinstated internally. We don't have to dig another trench. And as I said before, when properly applied, life expectancy is equal to that of new water main, which is between 50 and 100 years.
Question?
Mayor?
And as I said before, when properly applied, life expectancy is equal to that of new water main, which is between 50 and 100 years.
Question?
Mayor?
You said epoxy resin is what the liner is made of?
That's the curing material that gets expanded in the pipe that cures the pipe.
So it's not going to leach or anything into the water?
No, correct. This meets all of the standards for portable drinking water.
Okay. One question. I touched on it real quickly. Did you say that the cost of this is, can be in some instances cheaper than new?
Correct. Yeah. Especially in this case, given the crimes that we would have to cut into pavement. We have to remove several large trees. There may be utility conflicts.
So total cost of ownership is what really we need to focus on, the benefit, because otherwise, you might as well just do it new.
Correct. And essentially, what you're getting here is a new pipe. You have a pipe within a pipe. You're getting the structural strength of the existing pipe as well as the new lining also.
Okay. But less interference based on that whole list of things you had. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Catalano?
So Director, that's the whole street of Roy we're going to do, correct?
No.
Nope.
Director Lang?
So here you see it is Roy Drive from Welter to just past Apollo Court.
Right.
They'll cut two trenches.
So it's not going to go to Robin Lane then?
Yes. They'll cut, the majority of the breaks have all been on this
Right.
stretch right here. So they'll dig two trenches. Actually, Public Works will dig the trenches to cut down on costs. And then they'll pull the liner through, cure it in place. They'll have a temporary service to provide this house with water, which is the only service on the line. And then they'll reinstate the service internally after the liner is cured.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Catalano?
No. So, yes, no, yeah, good, thanks.
Other one names?
So when that's being done, so the water's off for that one service, where is the wa, where are they getting water from during the time when that's off?
So they will not lose water throughout the process. They'll have a temporary water line, which is this dotted pink line. It's actually above ground. It's a three-quarter inch blue line, which, as it crosses the road, it'll be covered with rubber and with some temporary asphalt put over it.
Okay. And then, oh, sorry. So then when that water is, the water main is lined and it's ready to go, is that pressure tested? How is that taken care of?
It is pressure tested, and we do rechlorinate and test it before we reinstate the main.
Okay. And how long of a process is this?
It's about two to three days. It's one day to pull the liner, and then you need a day or two to let it cure before you chlorinate it, test it, and reinstate it.
That's certainly a lot quicker than digging a trench. Okay, thank you.
Any more follow-ups?
No.
Okay. Alderman Catalano?
Are we going to notify the residents in that area that we're doing this?
We will, yes. We'll be in close contact with the residents, especially the one that will have their service temporarily.
And the life expenses expectancy of this project, I mean, as far as this pipe is going to be, what, you said about 50 years to 100?
Between 50 to 100 years. Same as a new pipe, depending on the conditions.
So we don't have to worry about it 50 years from now?
Yeah, hopefully.
Considering that, yeah, very few of us might be around, but maybe. Have we, have we seen this? Have we seen other communities that have been using this technology for a longer while back that we can start to see? I mean, this is a good project, but, I mean, will we really see if this is effective? Like, is there another community that's been doing this for 20 years or 30 years that we can realistically?
It is a relatively newer process, but there are, Furpal sent over a list of, two pages long of communities that they've worked with. I know Lombard has done a project that they wrote in a magazine article on about how highly successful it was. I believe Itasca has been using it for a few years now. It's gaining steam in the industry as an option as opposed to open cut.
If we fail, they all fail?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. That's fair. Sorry. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. So you guys are digging a hole. Do we have to cut the physical pipe open to get, pull that liner through? And then reconnect the pipe? How's that work?
Yeah, so they'll actually cut two insertion valves into the main, and then we will cut open a section of the pipe for them to pull the liner through, and then we will reinstate the main.
Hello?
Yeah. And there's only one house affected with that? I mean, it looks like there's houses all the way around.
Yes. These houses here get their water off of Apollo and Welter. Same for this house here, and this house is beyond the limits of the lining. So this property here is the only one that has its service connected to this portion of main.
Hello?
Yeah. But isn't that main connected to the main that's feeding the other houses?
We can isolate, there's a valve here that we can isolate this section.
So through the valves, we're isolating that section?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor?
So I got a question. So sometimes you replace a pipe and at the other end of the block, because it's the old pipe, the vibration tends to start opening and breaking over there. We got another 100 feet on that whole stretch. Why wouldn't we do the whole, I'm just, or is it the same kind of principle here? Because I've been told, oh, we replaced it over there, and now 50 feet away, it starts breaking because it's not as solid as the new, the new line pipe. I'm just curious.
Director Lang?
So lining in general is a much less invasive procedure than other forms of construction, open trench specifically. But anytime you do, even anytime we put a repair sleeve on, water's always going to find the next weakest spot to break.
Right, right.
So, I mean, we could keep pushing it down the line of where we're going to repair it.
Then you get everything else.
However, when you get into locations where there's more services, more utilities, other conflicts, the price goes up exponentially, and maybe now water main lining isn't the best option for us. So we felt that this was a good segment that we would get started on for our first water lining project to gauge how it goes and go from there.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
When will that project start, Director?
We're going to give the notice to proceed immediately after the council meeting, after we get official approval next week. And then we'll have to check with Furpal's availability to get started. It'll be sometime late this summer, early fall.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Items to be considered at future meetings. One, streetlight policy revision, September 9th, 2021. Ermann streetlight installation, September 9th, 2021. And I think that is, any other items? Okay. Well, I, I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourn, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, I'd like to call the Order of Finance Administration Committee. Let the minute taker take note that the same council members are present. Need approval of the minutes of July 8th, 2021, the Finance Administration Committee meeting. That is my motion.
I'll make that.
Second. Any corrections to the minutes? If none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next is report and recommendation to the renewal of economic incentive agreement with Patterson Dental Supply, Inc. Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you can see in the memo, back in, I actually approved it in '16, but there was an agreement that ran for five years from 2017 through the end of 2021. With the rates presented there, what the payback was for them for less than 5% growth or above 5% growth. They reached out to staff a couple of months ago looking to effectively renew the agreement with the exact same terms, except they wanted the payouts increased a little bit. That's presented there in the table on the first page. Again, none of the other terms of the agreement have changed. I mean, a couple of names here and there, but nothing fundamentally has changed with the agreement. As also mentioned in the memo, they've been in the top 10 sales tax producing lists of the city since 2006. And this is one of those deals that, you know, the better they do, the better we do from a sales tax standpoint. Yes, their payout would be a little bit better. But seeing that they're in the top 10, it's one of those where this percentage of their sales tax generation being in the top 10 is better than 0%. So, you know, I think staff would recommend renewing this for another five years. But obviously, that's, that's up to the aid of you, so.
And Alderman Woods? Yeah, thank you. So obviously, we do these things. Companies come in, they invest money, they build a company, right? They want to get some kind of return or some relief or help. Patterson's been here for a while. Patterson's a national company or international company, actually. I think the owners are England somewhere or something. But maybe you could help me, why is it necessary for me to help? They've, they've got a thriving business. Why is it that we need to continue to give them what I would refer to as relief? Go ahead.
Sure. So they had expressed to staff that what they did five years ago as well was citing the economic advantage or disadvantage of, you know, sales tax in one city versus another city. They've also expressed that they have a capital improvement ask this time from the landlord. We did offer, we did send them, Director Cage did send them information on the TIF, because they were on the TIF, possible TIF funding. They did not want to pursue that. They felt that this would be an easier, cleaner way for them. So I think they still cited the same sales tax rate issue that they did five years. They had the capital spend as well. And then just knowing the nature of the business with what's been going on the last couple of years, I think it's perhaps been, you know, a little bit rough on them being in the dental business. I think it's been rough on everybody, though, so I don't know that that's anything to hang your hat on. But I know the dental industry was particularly hard hit there for a while last year, so.
Go ahead, follow-up. Yeah, thank you. So, and I get that, but there's also been some relief. And again, that they're an international company. Their, their product line isn't isolated to just dental. Matter of fact, they're in the COVID testing segment too, which I'm assuming did rather well. And as far as the capital improvements, it's a good business, especially a thriving business like theirs. Those are all typically planned expenses, right, that you work out. You know that you're going to have to do certain things, whether that's roof, HVAC, parking lots, and all that. So I'm not sure I see that in and of itself as a reason to extend this. And the reason I'm asking, I'm not trying to make an argument against it. I'm trying to see why does we do it here? So whenever anybody else comes to me and goes, hey, wait a second, you know, if they can do it, why can't I do it when this is an extension of the agreement? It's not like we're bringing a new business in and trying to help them get going again or start up. They're there, and plus or minus, they're, they're a thriving business. It's not a small mom and pop shop. You know, that's like giving relief to the jewel. They might even be bigger than the jewel, so. Mayor?
So Brad, this percentage is only on growth, not what they've previously given us, correct? It's above, above and beyond? Is that under, it's under 5% to over 5%?
Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, so what we do is we take the sales from the prior year and compare it to the current year. And if sales are less than 5%, then they get that percentage of what they paid in sales tax rebate to them. If it's above 5%, then they get that percentage. It's not on the, the growth, it's on the entire sales tax amount. So if sales tax one year, I'm just making up numbers, was, you know, 100,000, the next year it's 110, they would get that half a percent on 110, not just that 10. That's not the, the growth itself, but on the entire, the entire amount.
Follow-up? No? Alderman Woods? Yeah. What's the value of this in total to that questioning? Go ahead, Director Wilson.
So I was waiting for somebody to ask that question. And two-part answer. One, obviously, we don't know what their sales.
I was waiting for the two-part answer.
I don't, we don't know what their sales over the next five years are going to be. The other part of it is, since, if you know what the city's sales tax rate is, you could extrapolate what their sales are, which we do know. However, the agreement with the state of Illinois, the reciprocal agreement, says that we cannot release that information or otherwise put that information into a venue that it could be interpreted so that it could be backed into. So therefore, unfortunately, I cannot give you that information here tonight on camera. I could perhaps share in private. However, part two of that is that there's only certain people that are eligible to view and consume that data. And the only person in front of me tonight with that is the mayor. It's myself, the manager, and Mr. Cage. We're the only four people in the city right now that are technically, per the state, allowed to see that data.
So for clarity, to sum this up, I have to approve an agreement that gives somebody a certain amount of money, and I can't know in any form or shape how much money that is.
Some good lobbyists they have in Springfield.
Jeez.
I mean, unfortunately, I mean.
Don't I get the part on camera?
Yeah.
I, I, I get that, but there's, there's got to be a way to understand what that is, because I can't make a decision and not know what I'm deciding.
I mean, yeah, we could look at that.
Currently, that doesn't cross the line.
Well, the mayor's out of town.
No. We have to sign paperwork.
We can Google it.
Yeah, we, so there, there's other ways to back into the data. I can, we can talk about perhaps off camera. So I understand your concern in that, that, yeah.
Mayor? Yeah.
I got nothing.
You got nothing? Any more questions? Go ahead.
Does that mean we also can't ask what percent growth they've averaged over the last five years?
Go ahead.
Oh, sure. That's, yeah, you can ask that question. So over the last, so we're in year five currently. So they've had three years of negative growth and one year of positive growth. And the one year of positive growth, they had what you would consider kind of like a whale month, which was some weird catch-up thing for their. So over the course of the four years that we've seen so far, I'd say they're effectively flat over those four years. I don't have an exact number, but just knowing what the percentages have been, it's roughly flat over the last four years that we've seen data on.
Go ahead.
So if they have a negative growth, they still get the rebate? Because that's less than 5%.
That is correct. When the initial deal was struck, we had asked about that, and basically, it was, well, we're never going to go below zero to, you know. And so that was basically taken out of the original deal. There were some on staff that wanted it left in, but it was taken out, so you are correct. If it is even negative, they would still get the less than 5% because, again, mathematically, negative is less than 5%.
Do we know how much PPA money that they receive from the federal government?
Found it online.
Right. Yeah, I don't know that yet.
Mayor?
So Brad, they also pay the non-home rule sales tax, correct?
Correct.
And they are a tenant, so they only lease, correct?
If that's my understanding correct, yes.
So they wanted to make it pick up and move if they break the lease, right?
That would be correct, yes.
And they are in the top 10?
Also correct, yes.
Right. In the what?
Great sales tax.
Right.
Could you repeat what you said? They're in the what?
They're in the top 10.
Top 10.
Sales tax revenue. And they know it.
And that's why they're doing that. Alderman Woods? Yeah, one, I mean, being in DuPage County, right, they're in a lower tax position. Strategically, they're in a good place. They're not going to move to a certain number of our neighbors, and they don't want to be too much further away from the point that they're at now. The, the other thing as far as the, the growth, and this is the same with a lot of companies that are national, regional or national, especially international, is the, the ability to move product around in different ways to different people create that number. So, again, not making an argument, but just because they came here and asked us, I'm not afraid that they're going to move, and I don't see any reason to go from .125 to .25. That's doubling, right, correct, on, on, on both sides. One, I fully believe, and I'm sure they do, that they're going to prosper. I mean, this is a time for them to ask. I, I get it. If I was them, I'd probably ask also, given the time. And I wouldn't mind or have a problem with keeping the rate that it was, but I have more of a problem doubling the rate or the number. Is that, is that a motion? No, that was a statement. Somebody else confirmed the motion. I'm motioned out. Alderman Messina?
Any question for Brad? Can, that information that we're not privy to see, can they probably find that in the 10K? Companies 10K? Probably not the annual report.
I would doubt it. Being a national and/or multinational company is probably just buried in some miscellaneous revenue or it could be even a rounding error, depending on what their, their 10K is actually rounded to, their zeros. It's, it's probably going to be small enough it might not even show up.
Okay.
Alderman Ames, go ahead.
How many other companies do we have this for in the city?
Director Wilson?
Counting the current one with Patterson, we have a total of three.
For similar returns or amounts?
Go ahead.
They're all a little bit differently structured. One, that we've had the longest, we get the first 15,000 per year, and then it's 50/50 after that. That was a new development. Then there's this one, and then the other one, which was a new development. It's a variable scale where each year, the percentage changes a little bit, and that's a straight split. It's, you know, 75/25 one year, 70/30 the next year, and it does taper. It starts off in the businesses' advantage the first year, and then at the end of the 10 years of that agreement, it tapers and actually is more to the benefit of the city. So this one is the only one that's structured this way, but there are three current agreements.
Okay. And as far as like a doubling after this amount of time, is that typical for renewal to actually double something? That seems like a lot.
Go ahead.
Again, it really just depends on what the business needs and or wants. So it's, again, because there's so many different ways that these could be constructed and shaped, you know, personally, I haven't seen one that's doubled. But at the same time, you know, this was also the first one that I've seen structured like this as well. So each one just is handled on a case-by-case basis. So, yeah, unfortunately, as I said, it just depends on the, the nature of the business and what they want to ask for.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah. How long is, how long have they been in town, this business?
About 23 years now at this point.
Okay. Have they, have they always been in the top 10 sales tax generators, revenue generators?
Said, the, the first report that I was able to find, or the oldest report, I guess I should say, that I was able to find in any of the files here was 2006, and they've been in the report since 2006.
And then just follow up, follow up on what Alderman Ames was asking. Out of the others, you had mentioned there's two other businesses like this? Out of the others, you had mentioned there's two other businesses like this. Are those also in the top ten?
Those were new construction.
Yeah, they were new construction. One hovers between nine and eleven, and the other one, based on what their pro forma was going to say, they were going to be in the top ten. I don't recall exactly where they were on the last list. I know they're just kind of getting up and running and everything, but based upon their, their pro formas, they were going to be, yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so I'm going to go back to typically, this is what you, deal that you put together for a business to bring them into town, although it's not unheard of to use it to keep them. That being said, I just gained a little more energy, so I'm going to make a motion to approve it but keep it the numbers as they were for the, as opposed to raising them. So the less than five percent growth is the point one to five, and the greater than five percent growth is the point two-five, right? That's what it was.
Correct.
So my motion will be to leave that amount.
Current?
Current.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any, any more questions on that? If, if not, we can have a roll call on that, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next is items to consider at future meetings. First is closeout of SSA number eleven coming up September ninth, 2021. And second is investment policy to be determined, that's going to be determined. Any other, any other items for future meetings? If they are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So will.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.